Good evening. Good evening. Welcome to the April 20th Mount Vernon City School District Board of Education Regular Meeting. Please rise for the pledge.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic where we stand, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. McCormick, will you please call the roll?
Trustee Red.
Present.
Trustee Turnquist.
Here.
Trustee Crump.
Present.
Trustee Mitchell.
Here.
Trustee Patterson.
Present.
Trustee McOwen.
Present.
Trustee White.
Present.
Trustee Saunders.
Present.
Trustee Miller.
Present.
Quorum is present.
Great, thank you. I'm going to mix it up a little bit and we are going to, I'm going to ask for a motion to go into executive session for about 10 minutes for a board governance matter, so may I have a motion to go into executive session?
Motion.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Abstain? Okay, thank you, public and administration will be back in about 10 minutes.
The video I sent you?
All right, I'd like a motion to return to public session.
Motion.
Second.
All in favor?
Yes.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Abstain? Okay, thank you. We're back. So I guess we are on to the communications from the public.
Good evening. We have one communication this evening. The CSEA unit 9161 is being unfairly treated. There are per diems who are superseding permanent CSE members in the early working shifts. This should never be possible. There are buildings that do not have the proper ratio to the work hours. According to our CSEA contract, this is not possible. Please advise Ms. Clarissa Keith.
We'll reach out to the association and recommend that appropriate protocol relative to negotiations or grievances, whichever is applicable in this instance, be followed. And Ms. Tigs will spearhead that resolution.
Okay, anything else?
That concludes communications from the public.
All right, so we will move on to our favorite section, reports from the superintendent.
Well, good evening, everyone. I do have a few things I want to share with you this evening. To begin, I'd like to just make a statement and share a brief video clip with you momentarily. Today, we witness a historic decision that our students experience, which will be etched in their minds forever. They have seen life after life taken, which could very well have been their brother, their sister, their mother, or their fathers. They have witnessed the most civil unrest in current history, and they have also seen the wheels of justice work today. I want our students to know that this case does not mean that all is well. What it means is that there is hope. Tomorrow, our teachers will receive suggested material to help them, help our students better express their thoughts and reactions, and seize this landmark teachable moment. And with that, I'd like to share a clip because CBS was on site and taped some of our students' reactions to the verdict today relative to the George Floyd matter.
As we know, the Derek Chauvin trial is capturing the attention of many Americans, including young people. I visited Mount Vernon High School outside of New York City, where I spoke to them about their thoughts and feelings on the case, especially after the hard-to-watch video of George Floyd's fatal arrest. What kind of a feeling happens to you when you see it displayed and played over so often?
I just feel sad about it because their family had to relive the moment all this time. And it gets me angry sometimes that there's still not justice, but let's hope there's justice.
What does justice look like for you?
I feel like he should go to jail.
You would be relieved if he is...
Guilty.
If he's found guilty?
Because it would show that there's hope, that police officers can actually be punished for what they did. If they do something wrong, they will actually be punished for it. It would show there's hope for us.
You know what gave me hope in visiting Mount Vernon High School in Marie is something that I always feel after I leave a school. I've done a couple of pieces for CBS this morning in schools with young people. I was hopeful because one of the things that was on display from these teenagers, which I haven't heard a lot of recently, was compassion. Almost, several of them expressed compassion for Derek Chauvin. They expressed compassion for his family. They expressed compassion for his loved ones. And many of them, although they do believe that he's guilty of the crimes he's been accused of, felt that he made a mistake, that it was something done in error, and not something that they felt was malicious, that he perhaps wasn't a good police officer, but that he wasn't a bad person. And you know, you don't hear a lot of that when you are talking to adults about what is going on in Minneapolis. And it was just refreshing. Like I said, they definitely feel the weight of police brutality in this country. They do believe that people of color are mistreated at a greater level than non, than white people. But that was sort of an interesting moment for me and a humbling one, for sure.
That makes me hopeful, Vlad, to hear that. Because we do, it's so rare that we have nuanced conversations about race now. Everyone's sort of firmly entrenched in their corners. And the truth of the matter is, is not to sort of be punny about it, but things are not that black and white. They're just not. And so I have sort of more hope for the future when I hear that young people are thinking that way. As a parent, you know, it's something that I wrestle with. As you know, my kid's a lot younger than those kids, but you know, figuring out how to have these conversations with her, it's really challenging. I don't want her to have a tainted or fearful view of the world or of police officers or any of that, but I also have to have a frank conversation. So it sounds like you found a bunch of kids that are smart and understand the nuances of race and policing and all the stuff that many, many adults don't seem to sort of be able to grasp.
Yeah, and it was a credit to their teachers, Ms. Delaporte and Ms. Manson, who held these really intense conversations with them. They had PowerPoint slides where they had questions that they had put on the PowerPoint slides to ask the students to consider. And they ranged from, you know, how you feel when you watch the video. Many of the young people said that they couldn't watch it. They couldn't watch the entire nine minutes and 29 seconds, that after a little while, when George Floyd was begging for his life and crying for his mother, that they could no longer stomach it. And it reminds you that they are still young, and although we like to think that young people have seen it all, and they've done it all, and they're much more mature beyond their years, they're still, you know, they're all teenagers. And it's interesting to hear them say that they were not able to get through the entirety of it in watching that video. And the other thing that I thought was sort of fascinating is that they do have these conversations. And it's interesting, I got a lot of feedback on Twitter from people who are like, well, are they learning about George Floyd's behavior before he was arrested? And the answer is yes, of course they are. I mean, as you said, it's not just, hey, do you think this is...
They can read. They can read the newspaper.
Their teachers are very clear to bring to them all of the facts and help them work through it. The teachers aren't there, as some people are positing, to indoctrinate them. That is absolutely not what they were doing.
Yeah.
What they were doing is asking questions and then asking those kids to think about those questions and to mull them over and to come up with their own impressions. And that is why you had some of them saying, I feel bad for Derek Chauvin, even though he did the wrong thing, even though they think that he should go to jail, he should be held accountable. You know, the other question that was asked by the teachers was regarding policing in America? All of them said that they believe in the police, that they look to the police for help, but that bad cops are the problem and not the majority of police officers. Again, sometimes very different than what you hear, for example, on cable news.
Yeah, that was a public school, right?
A public school, yep. Mount Vernon High School, Mount Vernon, New York.
And kudos for the teachers for allowing you to ask whatever questions you want to the teachers. I wonder if a private school would offer up their students as well. That would be very interesting.
Very good question.
Okay, that's it. Thank you for that.
They are sworn to serve and protect. I have complete confidence.
Mount Vernon was, so it's no surprise that of all the schools they could have come to, they called and asked about coming to Mount Vernon. And as you know, I shared with you over the weekend, Mount Vernon was featured in the Westchester Magazine, mentioned in the Westchester Magazine as well, as a school on the rise. So we have a lot to be thankful for and a lot to be proud of. So I'd like to move on to another area of my report. We haven't done this in a while, but I'd like to just recall your attention to the Nightlight Award. For our newer trustees, the Nightlight Award is something that I started to present to an individual or group that exemplifies what it is to be a knight. As knights, we live and work by the true virtues of knights, traits like courage, justice, mercy, generosity, faith, nobility, and hope. These are the values that we as educators and as a community wish to instill in our students. So tonight, I am honored to present the Nightlight Award to a most deserving cabinet member and district employee. The Nightlight Award is presented this evening with high regard for the person that will receive it. We talk about people in our lives who go above and beyond the call of duty to ensure that their job gets done. For this individual, this is just the beginning of what she does to make our school district a safe and welcoming place for our youngest learners. Tonight, we are presenting the Nightlight Award to someone who has been a mainstay in the Mount Vernon community her entire life. Having gone through the school system and then as a teacher and now a distinguished administrator, she bleeds maroon and gold. She is a person whom I know I can rely on to bring fruition to some of my boldest dreams and most extraordinary plans for our students. When I first arrived in the district, I wanted to encourage our students to read through our superintendent's reading challenge. What was initially conceived to be a reading activity for our students with a small celebration at year's end quickly became one of our district's landmark events, marked by quickly culminating at the end of each school year. Growing from one event in a gym to a day-long celebration, complete with carnival rides, games, music, and prizes, all in the name of reading and celebrating the success of our students. When the pandemic hit last year, New York State directed us to put together a day program for emergency responders who could not be home with their children during the extended school closure. She stepped up and in a matter of days, I literally called her, and in a matter of days, she created and staffed a robust program that met the needs of our students and their families, long before, I might add, other districts had even attempted to address this issue. In between special events, she makes sure that our district's littlest learners, our pre-K students, have an exceptional academic experience as they enter our schools for the first time. Even as our schools and programs canceled enrichment activities before the pandemic, she found a way to host robust virtual experiences for our students, including reading along with Santa and Hot Cocoa to virtual field trips to the Bronx Zoo and New York Aquarium. She is determined to make our young learners disciplined and enrich students. I could go on about her incredible impact and her vision, but I think she encapsulates all those things that we need our teachers and our entire community to represent. This morning, during our cabinet meeting, she referred to our jobs as not just a job, but as a ministry. So I am pleased to present the Nightlight Award to Dr. Gail White Wallace for her tireless effort and service. So this reads, "The Mount Vernon City School District presents the Nightlight Award to Dr. Gail White Wallace for her tireless dedication and service to the students of the Mount Vernon City School District, April 20, 2021."
Thank you so much, everyone. The first thing I'd like to say is, everything that we do for our students, it's a team effort. It is the amazing Nightlights that are all standing here today, that are sitting on the dais, Michael Bellicchio, who's giving me 5:30 every morning, making sure we can feed his. Mrs. Silver for making sure that zoo trips can happen. Ms. Tigs for making sure we have staff. Dr. B.C. for helping me make everything fabulous with the sprinkle of love that she gives us. And all the board members for supporting us. Thank you, Dr. Hamilton, for allowing me to be as colorful as I like to be because I believe that our children deserve the best.
Yes.
They are our future. They are what's going to make this world a better place. And they are what's going to make things like what happened tonight, justice happen. And we have to believe in them. Thank you to the parents, to my right kidney, Dr. Gorman, for always supporting me. Thank you, Dr. Smith, for all of your help. And Dr. Gayle, everybody, you are amazing. It is my honor to serve my community, and it is my honor to be able to love up on these babies every single day. So I thank you.
Thank you, Dr. White Wallace. I would just like to say that I agree that it is a team effort, but some stars shine so brightly. And from the minute you entered the district and talked about your vision for our youngest learners, I think we all knew that this was going to be a transformational event for our community. So on behalf of the board, I'd just like to say thank you. We love you. We want to help you in any way to achieve your goals, which we know you will no matter what. You'll beat our door down. So we're not worried about that, but thank you so much for all you do and you just have our heartfelt admiration and support at all times. Thank you.
And last but not least, before we get to our budget that we are proposing to this board and to our community, I'd just like to remind the board that tomorrow we will host our valedictorian and salutatorian commitment day signing ceremony. It will be held, I'm sorry, on Thursday, not tomorrow, Thursday, April 22nd, at 10:00 a.m. at the STEAM Academy. And we have some great news we will be sharing relative to some historic information regarding some of our college and university acceptances. And tonight, we are very happy to present the proposed budget to this board. And I want to begin by, first of all, commending, acknowledging, and thanking the Budget Committee, particularly the Budget Chair and other members who served on that committee, beginning with Mrs. Munoz Patterson, who will be also co-presenting this budget this evening. So if we can bring the budget up on the PowerPoint?
Should you go first or should you go first?
I'm going to pass the mic. I'm saying this is very freaky. I mean, I have a few things I'm going to show.
Got it.
I want to have it be the anchor. Is it projecting? Okay. So this evening, we have revised the budget. So the budget that the board received over the weekend has been revised. You have in your folders before you this evening what those changes are. You have the entire budget, but just to make it a little easier to reference, you have a budget document that shows what those changes are for this evening. In essence, and Mrs. Munoz Patterson will talk to you a little more about, a bit more about the work of the committee relative to these proposed changes. But we are very proud to be able to say that we were fortunate enough to receive some additional aid, which we've already talked about, but we've also received some federal funds that have allowed us to make some changes in the budget. And I'll give Mr. Silver a minute to talk momentarily about those federal funds and why they are treated separately. But we are proposing a budget that is reduced to match the same budget as last year, or our current year. So in our 2021 budget, the proposed 2122 budget is at the same $259,601,834. And we are proposing that we talk about how these federal funds will be utilized. And I'm going to talk to, ask Mr. Silver if he will take a moment to speak about those federal funds.
Thank you, Dr. Hamilton. Good evening, everybody. There are some $30 million in federal funds. $9 million of it needs to be spent in three years, and $21 million additional money needs to be spent in four years. And so our plan as of this time is to spend about $9 million this year, part of it from the three-year part and part of it from the four-year part. We took from the budget that we talked about a couple of days ago, we took about $4.2 million out of that. Dr. Hamilton will speak to you about that. And we are intending to apply the federal funds for this year to those reductions from the budget. In addition, we are planning some $4 million in educational enhancements in the coming year, and then about another $2.8 to $3 million in facilities improvements, which we will be talking about later. Maybe I'll just mention one thing, that we have been directed by the state to remove, to take down the Grimes Annex. That building has to come down, and we anticipate it's going to cost about $1 million. And so this is a perfect thing to come from those federal funds. The federal funds are meant to be used for one-time uses or for things that will disappear in three to four years, things we need now, enhanced educational programs. And those things will go away, but we will have a few years to take care of it. But certain facilities repairs that we need to do, like roofs, educational enhancements, those things will take place in the next few years. Dr. Hamilton?
So we, the significant changes that you have in before you relative to the packet that you received over the weekend represents building level budgets reduced and moved to the federal funds at $1.6 million. Transportation costs were reduced by $600,000 in anticipation of better bids and consolidated routes. Cafeteria costs were reduced and moved to the cafeteria fund, $300,000. Legal expenditures were reduced by 100 and other areas by 200. Now, what Mr. Silver just mentioned is that while those things have been reduced from the general operating budget, those funds are still available, but through the federal funds. So principals and schools will still receive what I have initially approved through their budget defense rounds. And so the question will be, of course, well, what will happen to the remaining part of the federal funds? So the cabinet worked this morning to identify some buckets that we would like to eventually propose to the board that you consider at a later date, once we are beyond the budget process. Educational enhancements would be one, specifically creating programs around graduation improvement[1455.78][1455.82]initiatives and elementary literacy programs, community programs, which would include a school-to-home parenting project and resource center, safety facility and safety projects across the district to make our buildings safe. And lastly, a record digitalization and archiving initiative. So those are the things that we brainstormed today, that we will flush out in greater detail and have a more robust proposal to share with the board for your consideration relative to these federal funds. This slide that's before you on budget revenue breakdown, Mr. Silver can speak to you about that. And there are parts of our budget that we are required to present, this is one, that we are required to show a breakdown of our revenue source.
So we are required to show what's called a three-part budget, and which has to do with program, capital, and administration. We talked about this just a few days ago, but where, when we looked at it a few days ago, the box up on the top left that had federal had a lot of money in it, now that's gone. And so the taxes are a little bit more, the state aid is more than it was last year, and I cannot see this. And there's other revenue and fund balance. So, Dr. Hamilton, should I talk about the fund balance for just a moment here?
Very briefly, yes. And then I'm going to pass the mic to Mrs. Munoz.
He gives me this look when I've gone past brief. So we had originally told you that we are not going to use any of the restricted fund balance in this coming budget. Then, as a result of what happened in the last couple of days, we ended up having to say we were going to use three-quarters of all that was left of the restricted fund balance. Now, with the changes today, we are using very, very little of it, and that money will live to be used another day and hopefully to be replenished if we get our tax money from the city. We plan to use a portion of what's left over at the end of this year to help to fund next year's budget. And remember that it was the board that told us to cut $7.5 million from the budget this year, and it was very good thinking that we did that because it will allow us to have substantial money left over to help fund the budget and to rebuild the fund balance, which has been diminished by a lack of taxes and state aid difficulties.
And you can finish up this slide on the three-part, and then Mrs. Munoz Patterson.
Okay. So this is the three-part budget, where we have, our program, meaning instruction, is 70% of the budget. Capital, having to do with facilities and repairs, is another 21%. Administration is 9%. But what's interesting is that that administration that's called 9% also includes the instructional leaders in each building, the building principals, assistant principals, Ds. Those people are considered administration, but they are really part of the instructional program, but the state causes us to categorize them the way they are. Dr. Hamilton?
So the three-part budget represents the amount of money allocated for administration, for capital projects, and for programs. You have a much more detailed version, and as we speak to the public, of course, we will provide more detail, but for the purposes of tonight's presentation, we wanted to just highlight those things that we know you've already had an opportunity to digest over the weekend. And with that, I will pass the mic to trustee Munoz Patterson, who is the chair of our Budget Committee.
Thanks. Okay, so I really quickly wanted to address what's going on with the budget and where we kind of started and what the goal is of the Budget Committee. Because we kind of, I think it's important for the public to know everything that we've done thus far. So with the Budget Committee, when you're looking at the goals of the Budget Committee and what our focus has been, it's been financial stability. We want to ensure that the district is good financially, stable today, and we're going to be financially stable going forward. And that's why one of the goals that we have is to rebuild the reserves, and we'll go through the reserves in a second. We want to ensure that the budget, although we want to be fiscally responsible, also does what we need to do, and that's educate the students. We want to ensure, particularly this year of all years, that we provide a more robust and extensive educational service for the students that have really been affected by COVID. And as everybody has heard, we focused on taking a slight tax increase. That's going to restore the district's positive credit rating, and it's going to avoid a large increase in years forward. The goal is to do slow and steady rather than taking big leaps. Now, for the record, just so everyone knows what has been going on in other areas, every year that we had 0%, many of our neighboring districts did not. And if you look at the chart that I put up there, you could see White Plains and Neurochelle just as two sources of information. And technically, the right-hand column is not accurate, and I'm going to explain why. So when White Plains took, let's say, 24, well, 0.24% in 2016, 2017, right? When you take that 3.46% from 17 to 18, you're actually taking 3.46%. When you take that 3.46% from 17 to 18, you're actually taking 3.46% of a larger number. So it actually ends up being more than the 13.4%. But for purposes of this conversation, White Plains, over the same five-year period where we took one tax increase of .89%, White Plains took 13.41%. Nurochel, 7.53%. Mount Vernon, .89%. Why was it important that we stayed a 0% or 0% budget increase? One of the things that we sit here and do, other than, you know, sitting fantastically at the stais, is that we are fiduciaries. We are not just fiduciaries, and fiduciary means that we are responsible for the money, right? So we're fiduciaries, but we're also all taxpayers. We all live here, right? Our primary job is to ensure that we have oversight over the spending, to ensure that we are staying with what we say we're going to do, obviously not overspend, that kind of thing. We have constantly, particularly on the Budget Committee, but as a board, we've been working to ensure that we are responsibly spending, that we're not, you know, running around contrary to popular belief and, I don't know, I don't, you know, whatever. I don't get paid by the district, so let's not, you know. But we're always looking for alternative revenue sources. We're always looking to try to see how we can diversify our revenue. And we have, to probably the superintendent's, you know, great consternation, we have regularly reviewed budgets for efficiencies, and we're constantly working with the district to see where we can realize savings while still providing the best education that we can. Oh, that got very small. Okay. So how did we do 0% tax increase for the years that we did? One of the things that we did is we relied on our fund balance to cover the shortfall from the increasing costs of running the district. So what is a fund balance generally used for? That's an emergency fund. That's your savings account, right? So every year that we've had a 0% increase, we've eaten away at our savings account. And you can do that for a while, but you can't do it consistently year after year, time after time. It's just not, it's not sustainable. So the fund balance that we used, we, it's used, we use the fund balance for annual contractual salaries, pensions, healthcare increases, all of which, by the way, increase every year regardless of what contracts we provide. Every single contract, every single contracted employee for the district gets, it's called a tri-borrow step, you get your step regardless, right? So we already know that we are going to spend more money this year than, or next year than we would this year. That's already built in. For the record, 0% for the last five years, and we still managed to meet all of our obligations. Rising insurance costs, which everybody is experiencing now, COVID-19, and we closed the gap resulting from unpaid school taxes that the city comptroller is withholding, $8 million of overdue taxes and $8 million in owed taxes. So what saved us this year? This year, we collected our own taxes. We took the bull by the horns, we brought it in-house. That was fantastic. We made a strategic decision as a board last year to cut money early because we anticipated that the state was going to cut our funding. And again, we used the fund balance. So would I love to sit here and say that we suggest another 0%? I would. I do not like paying any more taxes than anybody else does, but the fact of the matter is it's not responsible. So this is our recommendation for next year, that we start rebuilding the fund balance so that we're going to be financially healthy. We need to focus on this for a number of years. This is not a one-year goal. This is a multi-year, building back up to the 4% that we should have in our fund balance. Passing the half a percent tax increase to begin this process, we're cutting the currently proposed budget, as you heard, to match last year's budget, and we're going to use the funding that we managed to save to create a necessary and responsible cushion. Because if there is a, if we have a big issue in one of our buildings and something happens and the roof falls in, we may not have the funds if we don't take the precautions now to ensure that we're protected. Avoid being forced to pass a shockingly high tax increase in the future when we can be financially prudent today. We can do this smart, we can do it steady, and we can do it without affecting people negatively. And then we're going to establish the requirements that the federal funding provides and utilize it in a manner that will take some of the onus off the district budget, as we discussed, and ensure continued student achievement. So this next slide is probably my favorite slide because it's always a slide, I call this the doubter slide, because inevitably, these are the questions that people have, and I just want to make sure that we all have the answers. I want to make sure everybody watching has the answers, because I understand your questions. I didn't understand a tax levy till I sat here and somebody yelled at me and told me that we were paying more taxes this year than we did last year. And I said, "Well, that's interesting, but we had a 0% tax increase. What does that even mean?" All right, so what's a tax levy, to begin with? A tax levy is the amount of money that the district can collect for one year, right? Great. So what happens with the tax levy if we don't pass, if we don't increase our budgets? It's still at 0%. I think you, I think you did the best one with a pizza pie, right? So it's one pizza pie, right? But as other people get their assessments, right? And as everybody, so as property values get assessed, and as the assessments go down, that means that the peoples whose assessments don't go down pay a bigger percentage of the, they have to cover a bigger percentage of the pizza pie. So that means if you paid $1,000 last year, if, let's say, it's a half percent decrease in the assessments, then you may pay a half percent increase on your $1,000 this year. That's how that works, right? Which is why people come up to me and they say, "Well, you guys had 0%. Why did my taxes increase?" And I was honest, and I said, "I have absolutely no idea." Now I do. It's good news. So the question is, how do we affect that? The problem is, we don't control that. That is, that is the assessor's office in the city of Mount Vernon. We don't have any control over that. If we, if people would like to look into that, I suggest calling the city. So, okay, yes, I did that? Okay, so isn't enrollment declining? Isn't it cheaper to educate fewer students? The problem is, there is no ability to pinpoint where we're losing students, if we are losing students, right? And then when we instituted a community-supported bond referendum with the neighborhood schools, enrollment now goes across the whole city. So there is no, it's not like we can say, "Hey, listen, we lost 50 kids, so we're going to get rid of this one class," right? So what do we save? Maybe textbooks? And didn't Mount Vernon City School District just get a lot of federal money? If so, why do you need to raise taxes? And again, I'm going to remind everyone, that federal money, albeit a lot of money, is considered special aid funding, and we can't use it for regularly occurring budget items. So again, anything that we expect to repeat, anything that we want to keep doing, we can't do it for that. Thank you very much, and I want to thank the Budget Committee for all their work.
Thank you.
So this evening, the, again, and thank you, Trustee Munoz Patterson, the budget is presented at the same rate as, the same amount, rather, as last year, with the recommended half a percent increase over last year's tax levy, with the focus on sustaining programs and services currently in place, being responsible in terms of rebuilding the fund balance to avoid large increases later on, and of course, to make certain that when we are all gone, someone won't look back and say, "What were they thinking?" By not being more responsible relative to creating budgets and appropriate tax increases. This half a percent, I think, and kudos to the Budget Committee for their work, I think this is an extremely responsible budget, and I would ask the board's approval. And at this time, we'll be glad to answer any questions that you may have.
Yeah, and I just wanted to address the fact that Dr. Hamilton did mention that a few things changed from the documents you had received earlier and had some time to review, but basically, the only material change is that things have been, and someone correct me if I'm wrong, but my understanding is the only material things that have changed is that things that were previously in our general budget are now that are one-time events or two-year events that qualify for the federal funding have been moved to the federal funding bucket. So other than that, the budget has the same integrity, and we've been assured by the administration, as much as we don't want to, you know, put any governor on anything we have to, so, but we've encouraged that we can continue the great, excellent level of service to our children on an individualized basis, so each one can grow and prosper in their own way. So, questions?
Trustee McGowan.
I'm happy to start. By the way, I did attend, just as an observer, the committee meeting, the Budget Committee meeting this morning. It was very helpful. Thanks for all the work there. Dr. Hamilton, do we have, because everyone needs to know this, and the community is going to ask, the enrollment numbers jet ballpark for this year compared to last year and what we project for next year? Obviously, no one can predict with certainty, but what do we think?
This year, we do have a bit of a challenge relative to how we would normally use our data to make appropriate projections for next year because of COVID. So our numbers are down this year because so many of our students, we normally get this balance between transfer outs, where students are moving out of the community, and transfer ends, and they usually pretty much balance out. This year, we have not had the influx of, and transfer ends, because so many of our students have remained wherever they are in this virtual environment. And frankly, even some of our students who we are carrying on our rolls right now are virtual in places outside of Mount Vernon because they are in extended care situations. So I think the most responsible thing to do is assume our enrollment will be steady and remain flat for next year as we make these projections, and that's what we've done. In terms of staffing, and programs, and services, and materials, we've just assumed that those numbers would be flat. Ordinarily, we would look at enrollment patterns and make educated predictions about what size a first-grade class would be in this school, what size a second-grade class would be, et cetera. So we're kind of shooting in the dark. This year is a bit of an anomaly. But I will be able to give you our current enrollment numbers. Dr. Smith, do you know that offhand to keep me from searching the file?
Yes, I have. This year...
They can use the numbers from last year. They can use the numbers from last year. Some people like...
Today, our enrollment is 7,340.
And that's the same number we're be using for next year as well.
What was the number last year?
Last year was approximately seven, this exact same day, April 20th, it was like 7,780-something students.
So not much different.
Not much different.
I mean, I think we all anecdotally know people who are, you know, sitting in Florida but taking Mount Vernon classes and vice versa, so it's all kind of a mess. Are we, this is not...
Thank you, Dr. Smith.
Thank you. This is not necessarily budget-related, but is there a consideration given to doing another mandatory re-enrollment for next year?
No.
Let me ask it, let me ask it, let me ask it in a different way. I know it's a lot, I know it's a lot of work, and it's a lot of in-person work.
Yes.
But I guess let me ask a different question. How, what is the plan to get confirmation of our enrollment by September?
That's a great question. So Dr. Smith has started the verification process. IT is checking IP addresses to locate students who are working remotely and to figure out where they are and reach out to those parents and find out exactly what their plans are relative to next year.
Okay. My next question is staff. Do we have, again, not super specifics, but ballpark, does this budget reflect a reduction in personnel or increase or about the same? I know there are some, there's a lot of movement, right? Some positions we anticipate losing, some we anticipate gaining, but what's the net?
We're right now about 1,900 employees across the district. That's all bargaining units. We don't have a lot of retirements this year. We have probably a little more, few more resignations than usual, Ms. Tigs, would you say? So we probably have, will probably be a net, obviously, because we'll need to replace those positions, assuming everything will be flat. So we anticipate that our employment will still recognize about 1,900 employees across all units.
And for the public's benefit, there's one question I have when looking at the budget, is there's a large increase, a net increase in payment for retirement, but that's because of prior retirements that we've already contracted to do from the last incentive we did. That's why that number's there.
That is correct. Thank you for that.
I had one more question is, so let's assume, you know, we pass this budget July 1st, let's just say, the city cuts us a $16 million check. Nobody assumes that's going to happen. But what's the plan? What are we going to do with that money? Is it all going to go to unassigned fund balance, or what's the plan?
Well, we can, Mr. Silver, so you grab the mic, go ahead.
I wasn't sure if you were going to pass that off. Let me say it differently, because the 16 million is never going to happen. But, not for a long time, probably. Whatever extra money comes in, what is the plan?
So realistically, if we were to get eight to 10 to 12, that would be what would really be due right now, because some portion of the 16 is still not legally due from the city, even if they have it. Of course, we should be getting it, but some of it is the year behind or the year before, and so that makes it not actually due. Whatever we got, it is our intention to put it into fund balance. If we were to get eight, our fund balance would be at 100%. It would be exactly where it should be, at 4% of the budget, and we would be in great shape if we could get that.
Because what I'm, I just want to confirm, what I'm seeing here in the summary of the latest version is, even with the half a percent proposed increase, we're looking at a, using up a net, call it four and a half million roughly?
Yes, but remember that we are, as we talked about this morning, we are starting with a negative because of the money the state did not give us at the end of last year. So we're starting at a negative number, and that negative number is, it's an accounting number, because this state insists in the accounting that money you are due in taxes that you don't get must come off of your fund balance. So if we had that eight, or nine, or 10, we would be at 100% of our fund balance. We would not have to use up any of our reserves. So we are anticipating that we will be in better shape in a year. That was kind of your question before as well.
Yeah, that's my main question is, I want to make sure we're, as Trustee Patterson just said, right, to be fiscally responsible, we have to be adding to our savings account, not taking out of it.
Right, and I just want to point out that we have drawn a line. By collecting our own taxes, we've drawn a line. Nothing is now going to the city that they are not going to give us. Anything we get, we have. And we are, we're still collecting about $100,000 a week, even though that period for collecting taxes has gone. And remember that we have to pay the library, and we have to make the library whole this year. Even if we don't have all our money, we have to give the money to the library, because they have to get 100% of their money this year, whereas the city has two years to make us whole.
So, once we get the money, if we ever get the money from the city, can you...
Can you hear me now? Okay. So, isn't there taxes, I mean, is there penalties for the late payments of that money? Would it be an additional fees that they should pay if they decide to pay us? Would it be additional fees?
So the 16 million dollars that is owed to us by our accounting, and remember, our accountant is the city's accountant. The 16 million dollars that is owed to us includes, two years ago, last year, penalties, interest, current year, and library. And it is now coming up on three years since we have had one single piece of paper from the city telling us what those monies are for that we've received. And we've not gotten one cent since last August from the city. But your question, simple answer, yes, it includes interest and penalties.
Thank you.
If, yes.
I just have a... Can you hear him? Hello? Hello?
Give me a sec.
My question, what do we say to the public when we see them and they ask us that question? At one point, this district was run very top-heavy, and it was known for it. In other words, we had a lot of people hired who had been here for a long time and were still getting full pay, and they, we probably should have either bought them out or should have been retiring and things like that. What do we say to the public when they ask us, "Hey, you did all these years with no tax increase, now you're raising them?" You can't make everybody truly believe that if you got money saved up for the roof in case the roof caves in, and we have to dig into that, when we get money, we got to put the money back for the roof. You can't make everybody understand that. But what do we say to the people who come to us, "I'm going to get my jerk chicken and rice in LA, Trustee Mitchell, or Mr. Mitchell, why, what's the difference between what was going on then and now? What do we say?"
We have had, since I've been in the district, we have had at least three, maybe even four retirement incentives to try to address that issue, the very issue that you're speaking of. Administratively, we have consistently reduced administrative costs over the last seven years. Even this budget, that's before you this evening, there is a decrease in administrative costs. If you compare Mount Vernon to other districts, which that data is available in the state portal, you will see where we are relative to our administrative costs, and we are frankly And we are frankly above the number of administrators we should have for a district of this size, quite frankly.
You mean below?
Below, I said above.
I was about to ask the question.
We are actually, thank you, Ken, I saw you.
Been a long week.
We are actually below, below the number of administrators we should have for a district this size.
I'm just going to add to that because if you go back, and the public should do this too, go back and look at the past seven years of budgets, and you will see, because we track this, that the percentage spent towards administration does shrink.
Yes.
And that's, 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 that's what we've, that's what we've.
And if you, and if you look at salaries administratively, our administrators are below the mid-range. Even the superintendent is below, as I do some self-advocacy here. The superintendent is below. So we really are not at that, that's a perception that's out there that's just not supported by the data.
Yeah, and for the individual, you know, the head administration and the assistants, we as a board, we individually vote on those contracts. And as you know, every time we do that, we get the data and compare salaries and we do that whole analysis when the time comes.
Does that, does that help you, Trustee Mitchell?
That was good.
And I mean, look, here's the reality, right? Every year, you know, we, it's not, healthcare costs go up four and a half percent a year, right? People's salaries go up every year. Our health insurance goes up every year that we pay, you know, the percent, like, these costs don't, they just don't, they, they have to be paid. They have to be paid. I mean, the cost, just because we don't increase taxes doesn't mean that our obligations don't go up every year because that's how the world works. People don't, people don't work with 0% increases for seven years. Insurance companies don't accept no raises in their premiums for seven years. That's not how the world works. And when you live, and when you run an organization pretending like this doesn't happen, we know what happens. We know what happens. And we have a sister organization whom we love and work with for the entirety of our existence called the City of Mount Vernon. And some people in the City of Mount Vernon have been pretending that bills don't come and they don't pay them. And that's not a way to run an organization. And that's not how we, as long as I'm on this board, is going to do things. We have to treat this seriously. And that's what we were voted, we were elected to do, is to treat this seriously as fiduciaries. And we need to make sure that we run a stable organization with a real budget that can pay its bills and has set itself up for next year and the year after so that the money we invest in our kindergarteners now will still be there and be well-used when they graduate a decade from now. That's what we're responsible to do.
Amen to that.
I think, I think that the biggest answer, the biggest question that's always going to be asked, but we got the answer tonight, was what did we do these last five years that we didn't increase taxes? And it is just exactly as you explained it, as it was in the slideshow, we ate into our fund balance every single year. So basically, what we did was we took from the, from the building fund or the roof fund and we used that to get us by. So when we, when I run into people in the street that ask me that question, you did it all these years, you're getting all this state aid now, how'd you do it before? I think the answer was given tonight, and I hope that we get to share that with everybody. It's important.
Along with very rigorous, though, analysis and cuts and everything.
Thanks to the Budget Committee, big shouts to the Budget Committee, yes.
Yeah, big shout out to the Budget Committee.
And very easy to understand.
Yes. So, and another thing, Trustee Mitchell and all of us, that we need to remind the community of is without, without a savings account, if something happens, if there's an unforeseen crisis, and we've had two in the past two years, which are, one, COVID-19, and two, the city not remitting the school taxes that they've collected on our behalf. Those are two huge events. And so we know that what can go wrong may go wrong, and therefore, we need to be fiscally responsible. But, you know, that's what we're doing, so. Any other questions or comments about the budget before we continue?
No, I just wanted to really quickly, like, just to give an example of what we've done on the Budget Committee at some point, is we actually ended up looking at transportation routes and actually looked at where the kids were going to school and trying to figure out, like, I have any, you know, understanding of, you know, maps, but I can Google. So I started, we started Googling addresses, right, Wanda? We started Googling addresses and finding out which schools were near each other to see if we could save money. So we really do get into the granular, like, numbers on the budget, and we really do our due diligence. So it's not like, you know, everybody likes to talk about, oh, you guys spend so much money, you guys do this, you guys do that. Well, yeah, but we also have the results to back it up, too. Our school district is succeeding. Our kids are doing well. Like, it's not, we literally, we've squeezed the stone as much as we can, we've gotten all the blood out of it. There's nothing left. And I wish I could say, again, I wish I could say it'd be a zero, but I just can't.
Not reality.
Any trustees over here have any?
No.
Okay.
So if I may, Madam President, I'd like to ask our Budget Chair, Trustee Munoz-Patterson, to present the tab to the board this evening relative to the budget.
Absolutely.
All I have to say is yes, right?
Yes, and Mr. McCormick, if you will, read the tab into the record.
Resolve that the general fund proposed budget of the expenditures of the Board of Education of the City School District of Mount Vernon, of the City of Mount Vernon, Westchester County, New York, for the 2021-2022 school year in the amount of $259,601,834 for the purposes shown in the statement of estimated expenditures be and hereby is approved and authorized to be submitted to the voters at the annual school election budget vote on May 18, 2021, and the amount thereof shall be raised by a tax, a levy of a tax upon taxable property located within the school district and after deducting the monies available from state aid and other sources as provided by law. And be it further resolved that this Board of Education adopts a property tax report card.
Madam President, can I ask you to call for a motion?
Can I motion?
Ask for a motion.
Motion.
Oh, right, we'd like a motion to approve.
Motion.
I motion.
Yes.
Thank you. Okay, I don't know.
Second.
Trustee White?
All in favor?
Aye.
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 Opposed? Obstained? Congratulations. I do want to acknowledge the hard work of the Finance Department, the administration, everyone in this enterprise who has, we've had a lot of twists and turns. We've gotten a tremendous amount of information at the very last minute from the state, from the feds. And they've managed to be nimble and responsive to the board's requests and concerns. And I really applaud the dedication. I applaud the dedication of the Budget Committee as well. They've done an outstanding job of looking out for our taxpayers' money, and I can't thank them enough. So with that being said, I guess we can move on to, oh, no, we'll move on to committee reports? Right, so next, next, next up will be committee reports. I know the Budget Committee does not have a report because they gave the report earlier. If anyone has a committee report or a comment, if Ma May has a comment, Ma May has a comment. So Ma May, please.
Can you hear, can you hear me?
Get close.
Okay, all right, there we go. So I have three things to talk about. So first, graduation. So we found out that, well, at STEAM specifically, I don't know about the other schools, that we can only bring two people in. And some people have problems with that because if only their parents come, who's going to take care of their siblings, or what if they have extended family or things like that? So would there be any way possible? I know there are code restrictions and all that, but to increase the amount of people that can come to see them graduate, especially after all we've been through?
We have guidance from the State Department of Health that limits the number of people we can have in, in the capacity, within space, based on the capacity of that space. To the extent that the principals elect to move to an outdoor venue, even that has some limitations, but it may, based on the number of schools at STEAM in particular, because it is a relatively small graduating class, there may be greater opportunity. But that would really depend on the location of where the graduations were ultimately held. If they're held outdoors, there may be greater capacity.
When will that decision be made?
The state is changing information. I literally got an email last Friday at 6:23 PM, 6:01 PM, and it changed again Monday morning. So there's constantly information coming out about that. So I don't know, to be quite honest with you. We, I have a call with the Commissioner and Chancellor on Thursday, and that's one of the questions on the agenda.
When, it's graduation.
I don't have the graduation dates on the, off the top of my head.
I'm meeting with the principals on Thursday.
Okay. So we'll be able to send that information, all the year-end events for that matter, we'll be able to send home to the board trustees and next week's packet.
Okay, the second thing, AP exams. So some of the seniors want to opt out of APs, but they're concerned about having to pay for the exams. So if we opt out, do we still have to pay or do we have to show up for the test and take it anyway?
I'm not sure of the process for the AP exams. I do know that we help subsidize for students who can't pay, that I do know. I don't know that they are forced to pay for exams that they're not taking. Dr. Gorman, do you know that offhand or Dr. Smith? Yes, you get, you get the money back, Trustee, for some.
And the 13, 13. So around like 12 o'clock today, Schoology like went down completely and I wasn't able to get into any of my classes. That doesn't happen very often, but it does happen enough, so.
You say that louder, I can't hear you.
Yeah, I said Schoology went down around like 12 o'clock today and I wasn't able to get into any of my classes or I had to sit there and refresh for like 10 minutes and get laid to see my classes. And some people just weren't able to get in at all. So it doesn't happen that often, but it happens enough to, I think, be a problem. So are there any safeguards for that? I know that we're graduating, but for the classes after us.
Well, we, part of the challenge with, with Schoology is it's being accessed and utilized more than it was designed to do, frankly. So they keep updating it and we keep updating our system here as well. What we anticipate is to begin to migrate to a new system for next year, and that will take some time to do, but we also anticipate we'll have fewer students using it next year as well. So to some extent, we don't have a lot of control over that. It's about bandwidth and it's about how many people are on at any given time. We are looking to increase our bandwidth, and there's, there's a cost associated with that, but we get that from an agency called BOCES, which is Cooperative Services. But if, what we do is monitor how often that happens and that dictates how much we need to do with our bandwidth. But in the interim, that'll be our solution, but more long-term, we'll be looking at migrating our student information system to another platform.
Great, thank you.
You're welcome.
Will they still be using Schoology when they're in-house next year, when they're in the building?
That's a great question. We've been talking about what next year will look like as we tried to resume tradition, what used to be traditional education. And yes, Schoology will still be available to our students. We still want to marry some of the experiences that we've gained from COVID in terms of virtual opportunities for our students with the in-person instruction. So there will, you will see a platform available to our students next year that gives them the benefit of having both worlds.
Great. Does anyone else have a report they'd like to make this evening?
I do.
Great, thank you.
I'd like to update everybody about the ad hoc committee for expanding CTE programs at the high school. We had an initial meeting and went just on Zoom several weeks ago where we reviewed some of just our goals and outlines and divvied up with some responsibilities to find out more information about how to practically implement this. And we're going to have another meeting, Rick, were you rescheduled for when next week? Wednesday? Thursday?
Thursday, at noon.
Next Thursday at noon. However, we also had a meeting on April 16th, Trustee Saunders.
22nd.
Oh, I'm sorry, this Thursday, this Thursday, the 22nd, thank you. It moved. But anyway, in the meeting, in the meantime, last week, we did have a meeting. Trustee Saunders and I went to the Saunders program at Yonkers, the Saunders School, VOTEC program, no relation to Trustee Saunders. I met with Principal Stephen Mizzola, their longtime principal, and really got a, spent several hours touring their facility. It was a remarkable, it's a remarkable program. They were welcoming, they repeated over and over again. They were happy to work with us and continue to work with us to help implement some of the programs that they've found success in. It really was a great, a great, an eye-opening experience to see how a VOTEC high school can, a truly VOTEC high school can run and run well. Yonkers has some differences from our district, right? It's a much bigger district, they have a lot of different, you know, more high schools, more students, more demand. But some of the statistics from their, their program are really remarkable. They have approximately 1,000 students a year who want to attend that school, out of which they have slots for about 300. It's an extremely in-demand program. They can't even come close to accommodating all the people who want to go in. They have, among other things, they have a fashion program that's longstanding there. They have a full construction program. They have a much expanded auto program compared to ours. And it was, it was really helpful to see and, and think about some of the things they can do. We can implement, and some of the things we'll have to do a little bit differently. But it was really positive. And, and I want to point out kind of three things that they have that we noticed that we want to consider and we'll talk more about in committee. But one of them was, because the question we've always had is the question of certification, is do you take experts in the industry and make them teachers? Or do you take teachers who have experience? How do you get these people, right? And they had two main answers to that. One is they have a special HR person, that's all they do, is guide teacher, guide industry principals through, or industry professionals through the experience of becoming a certified teacher. So they have HR staff dedicated to making that transition work for their program. But the most important thing they do is a full 80% of the teachers in that program are alum of that program, which is an astonishingly high number, right? So that tells you, that tells you two things about the program. Number one, it's a successful program that people want to be a part of. But number two, it tells you, they track their graduates. They know how to contact these people. So when they know, when they have a job opening, they can look back and start making phone calls to people who graduated 10, 15 years ago from that program. It's really a remarkable system and it's worked out extremely well. They said from an administrative perspective, it's just a dream because you have people who are coming in who already know the culture, they know the building, they know everything they need to know. The other reality is they pay them relatively well. They don't necessarily start at step one. When you're hiring an industry professional, there are some adjustments that need to be taken into consideration when you try and hire, you know, a plumber to come teach a program as opposed to somebody teaching gen ed. That's just a reality that they deal with and that's something we'll need to take into consideration. And the last thing I wanted to mention is how they partner with businesses, which is the most impressive thing to me and the most crucial thing that we have to expanding this or any other program in the district. The example I'll give is they have an HVAC repair program, right? Learn how to do air conditioning ducts and all that work. And we walk in there and there's all these kids making, you know, air conditioning ducts as their senior project. And I asked the teacher about their supplies. Where do they get your supplies? Because this is sheet metal, right? Where's this sheet metal coming from? And he said, oh, no, we never pay for supplies. And I said, how is that possible? And he said, oh, we have a partnership with some manufacturer of air conditioning ducts who sends us the plans for, for long-term projects that aren't a rush. They send us the plans for, you know, I need 50 of these ducts made. And so I can, and we'll give you the metal to make them. And so the high school kids, that's their senior project, is to make these ducts. And as long as the partnership works and as long as the manufacturer said, as long as you keep sending me ducts that are well-made, and I know you have been, I'll keep sending you more metal. So they have this whole ecosystem at this school with these different partnerships that's completely self-sustaining, where they have made partners with different people in their specific industry, with some nonprofits. I know the Fashion Institute, they have partnerships with many of the high-end designers. They get, you know, reams and reams and reams of extra fabric, just donated, that they can use. So that's the key to the success, is reaching out and making these partnerships. So yes, there's initial investment in getting the equipment and building up your initial infrastructure. You know, the auto shop's got to buy lifts and all that stuff. But once you have that, how do you sustain it? That's how you sustain it, you sustain it with partnerships. It was really impressive and I hope that we can move towards incorporating that in the coming years. So more to come.
Excellent, thank you so much. Does anyone else have a report they'd like to give tonight?
I just, I just have an announcement.
Great.
A community announcement. So there's an organization that's called Neighbors That Cares Incorporated. And, you know, I think everybody on here know Brother Good Sight, lies good sight. And so this Saturday at Graham Elementary School at 10:00 AM, we'll be refurbishing the 15 boxes that they have for the garden. And so if you care to come out and, and hang out and experiment with some soil, it's not called. And so if you care to come out and, and hang out and, uh, experiment with some soil, it's not called dirt, it's called soil. And, uh, I, I hope to see you there. It's at 10:00 AM. And one of the things that we're trying to do is we're trying to change the narrative. I don't know if you know, but, uh, across the street from Graham Elementary School, that block in particular is notoriously known for having a murder once a year. And so I am a part of sitting down and us coming up with how we could change the, um, the narrative over there. And so this is a part of starting that and making sure that our children are safe as well as our community members in Mount Vernon. So that's at Graham Elementary School this Saturday at 10:00 AM. Uh, you know, everything is a fashion statement to me, so don't be alarmed if I have like some Michael Jackson gloves digging up in the soil. Hope to see you there. Thank you.
Do we need to bring garden tools with us?
Oh yeah, that's, that's perfect. So, um, bring garden tools. One of the things that we have a partnership with, uh, members of Delta Sigma Theta Sorority Incorporated and Kappa, um, and the Kappas, they're coming out. And we're making sure that Dr. Hunter McGregor have materials for the children to continue on with that. And so if you want to bring gloves to donate and tools to donate, strawberry bushes and things of that nature to be absolutely exciting. Thank you.
Excellent. Anyone else have an announcement or a committee report?
Not really, um, but I do know the bathrooms at Edward Williams are being completed very shortly. And, which is a plus for that school to have all the bathrooms redone.
Excellent. Great, thank you. I just, I had a call from a, a community member who raised some money to help feed our children. So I just want to give a shout out to the Sinai Free Synagogue. They have, they're make, they made a donation today to Feeding Westchester with whom we partner. And it's dedicated for Mount Vernon students for the backpack, the food to home program that we have. So it's really nice of them to think of us. They're very service-focused, the synagogue. And they're all about, you know, helping and doing things and they're very focused on children. So I also discussed with them, I'm going to be presenting to them information about the Educational Foundation. They may be interested in funding some of the projects that the foundation will be raising money for in the coming months. So I just wanted to give a shout out to Elizabeth Spiros and the Sinai Free Synagogue. Thanks. All right, if no one else has a report, I believe we're going on to the rest of the agenda, the rest of the resolutions at hand. So I need, going to human resources, I need a motion to approve Human Resources Resolution 5.1.
Motion.
Second.
Any questions about this resolution? All right, all in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstain? Motion carries. May I have a motion to approve Human Resources Resolution 5.2?
Motion.
Second.
Any questions about the summer high school?
Yes, I have a question.
Mm-hmm.
Is this, uh, this is currently in our budget?
This is, uh, grant-funded.
This is grant-funded, okay. Cause my question was, um, I, I have, I know this new federal money that's coming, right? Isn't one of the uses for the federal money, uh, expanded education opportunities, like summer school, night school?
Absolutely.
Things like that, that's one of the things, right?
Yes.
Because I have, I was actually, I was listening to, I, I think it was the New York Times, I was listening to something today about efforts all across the country to, what to do for the summer, to start expanding school into summer. Does that mean expanding it a couple of weeks? Does that mean part-time Saturday school? So I just, I think summer school, because of COVID, is going to be reimagined in a lot of places in the country. And that, but that's just the impetus and it's not going to stop there. I think it's going to become a permanent feature. And these federal dollars can help us implement that.
Absolutely.
So for our current summer, this upcoming summer, do we have summer plans yet for, and maybe there's more coming? But for, not just the high schools, but for all the schools and are we expanding it versus last year?
Yes, every, every grade is being offered summer school this year, which we don't normally do.
Right.
We usually do select grades, but every grade is being offered summer school this year. And we have, based on enrollment and commitment, we have anticipated that the program will be expanded in terms of staffing and resources available to support that.
Is it open only to students who technically need it according to some academic guidelines? Or is any parent who feels their student would benefit it can send them to summer school?
Any parent who feels their student would benefit is eligible.
Okay, at every grade?
At every grade.
Does that include pre-K?
Uh, I don't know. Yes, pre-K does have a program this year, it does. I was going to say, I wasn't sure, but I do, I remember that now. Yes.
That's a big investment we're making.
Mm-hmm.
And a very important investment we're making. That's great.
This is in-building summer school, correct?
In, in-person.
In-person, yes.
Thank you.
Thanks for that clarification. Are any other questions about this resolution? Okay. All in favor?
Yes.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Abstain? Motion carries. May I have a motion to approve Human Resources Resolution 5.3?
Motion.
Any questions about the adult education program? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Abstain? Thank you. May I have a motion to approve Business Office Resolution 6.1?
Motion. Motion.
Any questions?
No question, but I want to point out that this includes having a robotics program at, was it Graham, which school? I forget, sorry. Williams, Williams.
Mm-hmm.
That's awesome. And we had an amazing demonstration at the Saunders School of a robotics program in action. They were launching beach balls with a pneumatic cannon. It was very loud and very exciting, so I'm excited for this.
It's like beach balls. Oh, can I, it made me laugh.
All right, so all in favor of Resolution 6.1?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Abstain? Motion carries. May I have a resolution to, we already have adopted the school budget and property tax report card earlier, yay for the district. So we're moving to school improvement, may I have a, uh, motion to approve School Improvement Resolution 7.1?
Motion.
Second.
Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstain? Motion carries. May I have a, a motion to approve School Improvement Resolution 7.2?
Motion.
Second.
Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
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 Did I hear an aye from everyone?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstain? All right, motion carries. May I have a motion to approve Student Services Resolution 8.1?
Motion.
Second.
Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstain? Thank you. May I have a motion to approve Buildings and Grounds? Resolution 9.1?
Motion.
Second.
Any questions about this cooperative bid program? Nope, okay, great. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Abstain? Motion carries. May I have a motion to approve Superintendent Resolution 10.1?
Motion.
Second.
Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
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 Did I get an aye from over here?
Aye, I'm sorry.
Any noes, any abstentions, thank you. May I have a motion to approve, sorry to call you out, we got to get the, district clerk has to get this correctly. A motion to approve Resolution 10.1?
Motion.
Second.
Any questions about the school calendar?
Uh, that was 10.2, sorry.
I'm sorry, 10.2.
Yeah.
Yep, sorry.
I just had a question. Is this assume the same number of school days as this year?
It does.
Okay, did we make any, I don't remember if we made any change regarding how snow days are treated with, yeah, with, um.
Dr. Gorman is our committee chair on the school calendar. Dr. Gorman?
This year, we're, our calendar is as is. We get the Friday and Monday on Memorial Day and we ended the same on, in check. Okay, we decided not to go after the pilot day where we did the pilot snow day because we don't have an official ruling on it, so we are as is.
Are the four days still built in or?
Was it going to be a five-day week for, or?
It's a four-day week. It's the Friday and Monday.
The Memorial Day.
On Memorial Day.
But no, I'm talking about snow days. We usually have four built-in.
Yeah, we don't, we're not giving anything back at this point. There's nothing being given back.
No, I'm talking about for next year.
Next year, we have certain days built in. We have 180 and 184.
Yeah.
We said that there's a give back on June 27th and June 28th if needed, if we are seeing.
Oh, we're going to observe Juneteenth.
And we are observing Juneteenth. That is noted on the calendar.
Yeah.
Great.
Are we assuming?
It's going to be a five-day school, school week, not four days. It's not going to be the half-day.
That's correct.
Five-day school week, yeah.
Okay.
So in regards to the snow day, right, um, will you be doing it where everybody's remote learning?
We tried that. It did work. Um, and we have had, I think it was, it was quite successful. But there was some pushback because I think we were in COVID and people were kind of like maxed out. I'm open to exploring that again in next year in negotiations with, having conversations with the various unions. But I personally think it's a great idea, but of course, um, not at the risk of compromising labor relations.
And, and as a parent, I'm going to say when there's a lot of snow on the ground, the last thing my kids want to do is be online. Don't take that the wrong way. But they want to go out and play.
That's right. All right, so all in favor of the school calendar?
Aye.
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 Opposed? Abstain? All right, we will make snow people. May I have a, a motion to approve Board of Education Resolution 11.1?
Motion.
Second.
Any questions about the BOCES? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
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 Opposed? Abstain? Motion carries.
What's 11.2, new agenda?
What's the 11.2? Where did that come from?
Election of the BOCES trustee.
11.2 is the target.
Nothing there.
That's the, 11.2 was this, uh, BOCES person, election. You don't have anything?
Election of the BOCES trustee. If you refresh and rejoin the meeting, you'll see it.
Okay, so, um.
Refresh, Adrian.
Motion to approve, uh.
11.3 on your old one.
11.2?
11.2 is always playing.
How you get up there and stack and, oh, there you go.
So this is the only person running?
One person for two seats.
One person for two seats, okay. Yeah, I mean, if, if anyone has more bandwidth, which I don't believe anyone in this board does, because everyone works very hard at multiple jobs. But, um, there is.
Just didn't see anything.
An opportunity to volunteer, uh, as a trustee with BOCES. All right, all in favor?
Yes.
Aye.
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 Opposed? Abstain? Motion carries. Oh, acceptance of minutes. May I have a motion to approve Board of Education Resolution, Resolution 11.3?
Motion.
Second.
Any questions about these minutes? Who was not there that might need to abstain?
We're all there.
Was it all of us?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. Great, so, um, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Abstain? Motion carries. I think this has been a long week and it's only Tuesday night. So, um, uh, so I, I would like to, unless anyone has anything burning, new business, okay, trustee, make one.
First of all, we need to have this, we just want to have the new business like on the agenda. It's not even there. Not even there. Um, I have, what do I have? I have summer school, we already talked about.
We got so many budgets.
Uh, just a question for administration and a question for the board, I guess. Question for the administration, um, I received a question from a community member about football games coming up. We're playing football games at the high school. What, what are the, so we know, like, what are the regulations about who can attend? How can we bring people? Can they do grilling before? Like, what are, what are the rules?
I think opposed it, but I'll, I'll send it to you. I'm hoping to send the board and we can publicize it if it's not. I know there are specific regulations on how many people can.
Right.
Come in, the temperature checking, the questionnaires and everything else.
My son's got his first game Sunday, so I got to know.
I'll like, I'll get on it tomorrow.
All right.
Also, I guess we all need to go root for Sam.
Yeah, everybody's got to come.
All right.
Must, must do. He's center, he's playing center, of course. Of course he is.
Awesome.
Um, question for the board, I guess, is, uh, when are we going to start having, letting the public come make public comments and attend the meetings? If we're having live in-person meetings and we can socially distance, can people come make comments?
I don't know if we can socially distance in here. That would, we.
Yeah, maybe we do it next door or something, but.
Maybe that's something that they'd have to do at the high school because it's bigger.
Yeah.
Which venue? I mean, I, I don't know if, if Holmes is big enough, we might have to do it at the high school.
Yeah, I mean, I mean realistically, statistically, we, we've only been having a handful of, of, uh, public comment anyway. I don't think it would be a big burden to have two or three more people in the room.
Well, I think what we could.
You never know how many people are going to.
Yeah, we got to know in advance. I know, I know.
Well, well, but, yeah, but Mr. McCormick is notified in advance and we could only let registered speakers in. They could, they could sit outside in the back socially distanced. We could put the podium right at the entrance to the fishbowl and they could speak there.
Yeah.
So, um, I think we could probably go back to that as soon as poss, as soon as possible. But once again, we need to remind the public that you must register to speak with Mr. McCormick by 4:00 PM on the day of the board meeting. No exceptions, especially during COVID. And we will only, in terms of building entry, we can only let the speaker in, I think, for now. And, and, you know, as, as, as restrictions ease up and we get more comfortable, which is either going to be July 4th or at a later date, depending on what the CDC says, uh, we can, we are hoping to resume not just our regular board meetings, but also our school, in-person school. So, yeah, so there's no reason why we can't start that effective with the next meeting.
I have, I have a question also. So when the election comes, we usually have the big boards and everybody's sitting around and how is that going to be scaled down?
Well, we did that last year over.
Just putting it out there.
It was manual, it was, what do you call it? Manual last year and, um, it was pre-COVID, but, um.
Was it pre-COVID?
No.
No, it wasn't, no.
Oh, that's right, May. I'm thinking, I'm sorry.
You were doing that, oops, you were doing that on Zoom, right?
Yeah, we, we.
They were counting on Zoom.
Yeah, yeah.
I mean, I.
It was, it was post-COVID, but I don't, the restrictions that we face today weren't in place at that time, that's for sure. It was at homes, that's correct.
I think maybe it should be done the same way.
Well, would that be something that this, the governor would mandate anyway?
The, I don't know.
I think as long as we maintain the social distance, uh, as long as we abide by the state mandates on social distancing, we should be fine. Uh, but we will have to limit the number of people who can come in.
We have all the people that do, that count the ballots and bring them in, you know, so.
But how will you determine?
Because we're going to use machines. I don't think they used machines last year.
No, they did not. It was all done by.
So we'll just have, we'll have, as per usual, we'll have people coming in to drop off their results. And I think perhaps what they'll have to do is drop off their results. We'll have to be, we'll have to be very buttoned up.
Yes. So the, um, our initial thought, so there's only going to be 10 election inspectors this year that will deliver the ballots because we've reduced all of the election districts into, in each building, down to one election district. So only one chairperson from each school will bring it. So that will, that'll significantly eliminate the number of folks coming in. And our initial plan is to have them wait outside in their car and call them in one by one. and call them in one by one in order to facilitate the processing of the ballots. Inside the building at this point, we were, we were planning on doing it here unless the direction comes out from elsewhere. But we've also scaled back the number of district staff that will be here for counting the ballots. And as long as we maintain social distancing and keep the room at capacity, we should be able to facilitate something here.
Okay, does that make sense?
Yeah, it makes sense.
Everyone? Okay, so TBD, but we will be, we'll be in person somewhere.
But Rick, could you go over the absentee ballots now? It seemed like it was a new procedure or something?
Yes, the governor issued an executive order last week that COVID is a valid excuse this year to receive an absentee ballot, though you do need to file an application as previous years, but you can mark on your absentee ballot that COVID is the reason that you're requesting.
So where did they get the absentee ballots?
They're available in the district clerk's office on workdays between the hours of 8:00 and 4:00, and also by appointment.
And when should people come? How, how early should they come to be able to get it?
People can start coming anytime to receive the absentee ballot application. The ballots will not be ready, however, until sometime early, the first week in May.
Okay.
So when they pick up the absentee ballot, you write their name in a, or?
Yeah, then, so the process is, first you have to get an application, which there's a new application that'll be uploaded to the website this week. So you can download the absentee ballot on the web, from the website and return it to the district clerk's office. And once we get that, then we take that absentee ballot application and double-check it on the voter roll book to ensure that you are in fact a registered voter for the city of Mount Vernon School District. Once we verify that, we can mail it to your home. If it's before, I believe if it's before March 11, May, May 11th, we can mail it to you because we trust that the post office will get it. Otherwise, you can pick it up here at the office.
Do they have to pick it up or can?
They have to pick up their own absentee ballot.
They have to sign.
Yeah, yeah, we have to, we can only release the absentee ballot to the voter.
But that's strange because it's my understanding that you only have to be a Mount Vernon resident for 30 days in order to go vote, is that right?
We have.
So you have to be a registered voter and on the voter roll.
Say that one more time.
In order to vote for the school board election, you just need to be a resident of Mount Vernon for 30 days, is that right?
No, you do have to be registered to vote.
You have to be a registered voter?
But to qualify to register, you need to have been a resident for 30 days. Let's whip in this.
That's it for me.
Okay, and any other questions or new business?
We have a board meeting before the election, right?
Yes, our next board meeting is May 4th, which is also the public hearing on the budget. And then our following board meeting after that is the night of the election, May 18th.
Okay, so we might want to consider a different venue for May 4th to accommodate, yeah.
May 18th.
Well, May 4th and May 18th, but we'll figure it out. All right, so if there's nothing else, may I have a motion?
I motion.
Motion.
I was going to, okay, so you just signed up for Southwest BOCES. Only kidding.
So a motion to adjourn is accepted and a second is accepted. All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Okay, opposed, abstain? Thank you, everyone.
Thank you.